Good evening. Hello. Hi, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 27, 2025, City Council Regular Business Meeting to order. Hello. Thanks for being here this evening. We have with us City Manager Blair King. We have our City Attorney James Haney and our Deputy City Clerk Peggy. Ben's helping us with IT. Peggy, would you please read the roll?
Yes, please state for the record you're present when I call your name. Mayor Matthews.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quitzland.
Present.
Councilmember Deets.
Present.
Councilmember Hytopolis.
Present.
Councilmember Morawaki.
Present.
Councilmember Schneider.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilmember Phantrey Johnson is not with us this evening. Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd also like to read the Suquamish land acknowledgement. Every part of this soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hallowed by some sad or happy event in dates long vanished. Chief Seattle, 1854. We would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is within the ancestral territory of the Suquam people of Clear Saltwater, Suquamish people. Expert fishermen, canoe builders, and basket weavers, the Suquam live in harmony with the land and waterways along Washington's Central Salish Sea as they have for thousands of years. Here, the Suquam live and protect the land and waters of their ancestors for future generations as promised by the Point Elliott Treaty of 1855. And, okay. And next, we will go on and approve our agenda. Councilmember Morawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. I move to approve of the business agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Morawaki, seconded by Deputy Mayor Quitzland. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? And are there any conflicts of interest this evening? Nope, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. We have one this evening, and it's approving the proclamation declaring May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month. And I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation by the City Council of the City of Bainbridge Island, Washington, declaring May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas, mental health is a vital part of overall health, yet stigma and barriers often prevent individuals from seeking the support they need. And whereas, the city wishes to demonstrate its commitment to mental health advocacy and support for all who call our community home. And whereas, by issuing this proclamation, we aim to raise awareness, encourage open conversations, and promote access to mental health resources. And whereas, as a leading advocate for youth mental health, Bainbridge Youth Services, BYS, provides free confidential counseling and support services to young people in our community. And whereas, throughout May, BYS, Bainbridge Youth Services, will host outreach initiatives to educate and engage the public in mental wellness efforts. Now therefore, I, Ashley Matthews, Mayor of the City of Bainbridge Island, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Bainbridge Island and encourage residents, businesses, and organizations to join us in prioritizing mental health and ensuring that Bainbridge Island remains a community of care and compassion.
Yeah. May I? I move to authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation declaring May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month and to add this proclamation to the list of annual proclamations that may be signed in the future by the mayor without further council action.
Sir, sir. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Motion made by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Deets. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
On behalf of Bainbridge Youth Services, including our board members, staff, and youth, we are honored to accept this recognition.
We are proud that you're acknowledging Mental Health Awareness Month this May. It's important to remember that one in five adults experience a mental health condition each year, and half of all mental health conditions begin by age 14.
Mental health conditions are treatable, and with the right support, people can lead fulfilling lives. Unfortunately, stigma often prevents individuals from seeking help. By recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month, you are helping to reduce stigma and foster a more inclusive, judgment-free community here in Bainbridge. Thank you for making a meaningful difference.
Thank you all so much. Next, we'll move on to public comment. In-person public comment is accepted at this time on any topic of public interest. Each commenter will have three minutes, or such amount as meeting chair determines, to speak. Public comment is not taken on individual agenda items during the meeting, so this is your chance. First is Rhonda.
My name is Rhonda Peacock, and I'm a member of the Public Art Committee. In 2022, the developers for the Wintergreen Townhome Project approached the Public Art Committee seeking help. They wanted to put some art in the project's outdoor common spaces. The Public Art Committee met with the Wintergreen team, learned of their interests, their budget, and told them how we could help. The Public Art Committee in turn received a fee for this, which went into the Public Art Fund. In the meantime, we put out a call for artists, got together a jury, and organized the project. The jury selected two artists, both of which had been featured in our Something New program. The finished pieces are two sculptures from Chuck Fitzgerald, an artist featured in Something New Six, and who is also being featured in our upcoming Something New Eight, and three mosaic pieces by Mark Brody, whose mosaic sculpture Lucky was right here at City Hall as part of Something New Five. Mark created two Bainbridge Island mosaic maps, each featuring different points of interest on the island. The Wintergreen team was so enamored with Mark's art that they also commissioned an entrance sign, and you can see that as you're heading down Wintergreen Lane towards the Virginia Mason Clinic. This is the first private project the Public Art Committee has worked on, and I am so pleased the artists featured in our Something New program were involved. With the Wintergreen developers commissioning the art pieces, local artists received a meaningful income and public exposure, while the development gained unique public art for the enjoyment of its residents and visitors. This is just one example of how the Something New program's fruits have fed our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Glynnis. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Glynnis Cowdery. I'm President of Arts and Humanities Bainbridge and the Chair of the Public Art Committee. I love this initiative, more public sculpture. My family and I have really enjoyed this public art program. Thank you. Wonderful competition in artists. Long live the arts. These are just some of the positive feedback we hear from the community about the Something New program. The Something New program is in its eighth rotation, bringing vibrancy, engagement, and public art to the island. Over the last several years, we've worked really hard to expand the outreach for the Call of Art. This year, the call went out to over 18 organizations, including café, local university MFA programs, the Artist Trust, and local tribal organizations. We received 36 submissions from 22 artists. This is an increase over last year, when we received 24 submissions from 17 artists. This year, artists were both local, as well as from as far away as Spanish Fork, Utah, and Hood River, Oregon. For Something New Eight, we also changed the way that we, the Public Art Committee, selected the jury. In the past, a jury was chosen primarily from folks known to the members of the Public Art Committee. This year, we put out a call for jurors, and we quickly learned that Bainbridge has a jury talent in its myths. We found eight jurors, including Councilmember Brenda Fontori-Johnson, and the other jurors included artists, a landscape designer, an architect, a Seattle Public Art Administrator, and even an island treasurer. Together, this jury reviewed and discussed each piece for its merits and shortcomings. To ensure a fair and equitable selection process, all identifying information, such as name, location, and biography, were removed from the artist's submission prior to review. This blind jury approach allowed our panel to evaluate each piece based solely on its strength, quality, and originality, promoting a more inclusive and unbiased review process. Arts and Humanities and the Public Art Committee are so very thankful to the Bainbridge staff who help bring this program to the public each year. As I said before, Something New is one of the gems in Bainbridge Island's art crown. It makes art accessible and integrates it into daily life. It enhances the quality of life and strengthens the fabric of our community. We look forward to seeing Something New Eight pieces installed this summer. Long live the arts. And I hope to see you all Saturday at the Asian Arts and Heritage Festival from 11 to 5 p.m. at the American Filipino Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mike Seidel.
Hello, my name is Mike Seidel, and I was one of the jurors for Something New Eight. And if I look familiar, maybe because I do regular still photography and videography for the city, I'm also a past member of the Public Art Committee. I think we all know the value of public art for a community, how it humanizes the built environment and invigorates public spaces, how it supports the arts community and individual artists, how it gives the general public direct contact with art without the necessity of a museum or art gallery, how it can provoke discussions about our values as a community and as a society. I think all those things are true, but for me personally, it provides an opportunity for education, for learning. I've always thought that art can spark a conversation between the viewer and the art, or between the viewer and the artist, or the viewer and the community. The jury for this year's selections was made up of a cross-section of local residents, all of whom have a vital interest in art. And sitting in that room, listening to the diverse opinions and reactions to each of the pieces, was fascinating. I learned a lot. I saw things I hadn't seen on my own. I think my perspective became broadened, enlarged, and isn't that what art should do? I've had the opportunity to meet almost all of the artists selected for Something New for the past six years, and all of them, to a man or woman, was intelligent, thoughtful, creative, surprising, generous, vulnerable. And I wanted to mention that Arts and Humanities Bainbridge has videos available about all of the selected artists over the years. So there was this tremendous opportunity to meet the artists and listen to them explain their work. And for me, this is where the opportunity to learn happens. By observing a piece of art this slice in time and trying to understand what the message is, for me, has become a lifelong passion. Thank you for this opportunity and for the support that the council has provided to our fantastic arts community over the years.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who is not signed up but wants to speak? No? Okay, Peggy, we have one on Zoom. Charlie.
Am I on?
Yep.
Okay, great. Well, tonight, I will be speaking as a representative of the Suquamish tribe on the Technical Advisory Committee to the Groundwater Management Plan Process. And I think you were all inundated with emails from me yesterday having to do with attachments not being included in many cases in the 55 pages of comments on the groundwater management plan. So I just want to sort of reiterate what the most important of those were. First off, there was an analysis of recharge changes that might take place with climate change, and this was a 10-page analysis that I did with figures and tables. And it was attached to April 25 and May 14 comments. And secondly, there was an analysis of the movement of groundwater between the four major aquifers. I took two pages from USGS report done for Bainbridge Island, basically saying that the movement to the deeper aquifer has increased post-development because of the pumping from the deeper aquifer pulling water from above down towards the deep, like, fetch by aquifer. And then I had a one-page picture attached to talk about sea level rise projections from the University of Washington Climate Impacts Group. And one final comment on University of Washington Climate Impacts Group projections. There's been a little bit of, I guess, sort of disagreement on what they say. First off, there are no projections for changes in recharge. Recharge is something that can't be measured directly and has to come at by looking at changes in temperature and precipitation and evapotranspiration. Second, the only projections that have unanimous agreement among the many climate change models are that there will be less summer rain, there'll be more intense winter storms, from two to seven of these, there'll be increase in temperatures in all seasons, and there will be sea level rise. Precipitation projections for all other seasons, and the annual were not all in agreement. And lastly, I would just like to make a plug for Suquamish and Northwest Indian Fisheries Commission-sponsored showing of Fish War documentary at the Limwood Theater on Sunday, June 8 at 6:30 p.m. You're all invited to come. And we have Ron Charles, former longtime Chair of the Port Gamal Sklalem Tribe, and Josh Bagley, the current Vice Chair of the Suquamish Tribe, and Representative Greg Nance will be there for a post-showing discussion. The documentary uses a lot of archival footage from the 60s and 70s to depict the extreme measures used by the state of Washington to keep the tribes from fishing in their ancestral fishing grounds. The Bolt decision in 1974 reaffirmed the 1855 tribal treaty rights to fish in their usual and custom areas. It's a sometimes disturbing documentary of what was actually happening in our backyard here in Pacific Northwest. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Charlie. One, just go up, Malcolm. It is just, yep, just head up to the...
Thank you very much. Malcolm Gander, Rolling Bay. Okay, I'd like to amplify for a second on what Charlie Kratzler was just talking about. Overall, the groundwater model and the tech memo, there's a lot of favorable things about it. There's three scenarios. Low, let me see if I can get this right. Low, medium, medium, high, with 7.5% decrease in recharge, and then medium, high, with 20% decrease in recharge. All I wanted to say about that was something that everybody can grasp. The one scenario that's called low, medium, it's for 100 years. It assumes no recharge change. There's a wealth of information for latitudes where we live, and not just the University of Washington Climate Impact Group. There's a lot of information, peer-reviewed journals, that do not agree with that. So I think that needs to be redone, and it's not going to break the bank to do it. So this is just an opinion from me about the draft groundwater management plan. I know that it was advertised as, okay, it's a rough draft. You know, we're going to get comments, and we're going to work on it some more. They've had this thing since May 2023. We've been having meetings. I think it should be farther along. I think we need to lean on the consultant a little bit and get this thing done. And I'm looking forward to the response and comments in writing. And I sent around an email today, or that was great, it's in your agenda packet. But those comments aren't very good if you don't include the attachments with them. And, you know, case in point, I've talked about this table, this production table. It's basic information that'll help us do planning. You know, we can look at these production wells down at the south end where we have problems, and we can go, wow, this is what we produced in 2001, this is what we're producing in 2021. We can use this for planning. This is a planning document, and as Ted Jones knows and Andy Marin, this thing is going to complement the city water system plan, which is late. That needs to get done. So, a couple other things. We need to have some basic information as a repository in this. I know it's three minutes, so I will have another comment in two weeks about that. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who? Okay, seeing none, we, public comment is closed, and we will move on to the consent agenda. And consent. Councilmember Hytopolis.
Yeah, hold on. I wanted to pull two items, and I hope the council bear with me because I was unfortunately gone for personal and then family health reasons, two meetings in a row. I wanted to pull 5G and 5I.
Okay. Is that right? Okay.
And I would move for the, that the council approve the consent agenda with those two exceptions.
As a...
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Hytopolis, seconded by Councilmember Morawaki. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so 5G. Yeah, 5G. So my concern about that one was just with two things, which I think I've raised previously, but again, I wasn't here for the discussion at the last meeting, it was discussed. One concern would be, I don't think that we should be allowing, if we're going to go ahead and make this change, I don't think we should be allowing ethics complaints against councilmembers who are former councilmembers. I don't see what jurisdiction we have over them. I think it's completely inappropriate. As an attorney, and having watched other attorneys sit on this body and then have, you know, I believe in every case, specious ethics complaints brought against them, it's very disturbing for our practices, our professions, to be forever cast on, you know, Google as unethical because somebody raised it. So I always think it's kind of questionable anyway, but to do this to a councilmember who's gone, I think this should terminate. And I think right now, this change is going in that direction. It's going to cap it, if I'm correct, at one year after. I don't see any, how we or the Ethics Board has any business going after people who have left the City Council. So that was one concern. And my other concern, which I had raised before, which was that it actually goes in the other direction. It allows for more complaints, and that is that this also puts a sort of statute of limitations on complaints so that they need to be made within a year of their currents. But a typical statute of limitations requirement, would there be a requirement that somebody actually had reason to know that they had a claim? And so what happens if something really significant happens, and someone's sitting on City Council still for three more years, and it's discovered that something happened, and now no one knows for a year and 20 days afterwards? I don't know why we would say that that complaint couldn't be brought forward. So those were just the two concerns that I had, that I would, I would want to amend this to read. If nobody was to make a motion to, I think what we would do procedurally with, what would we need to procedurally move it off the consent agenda, what is off the consent agenda? Would we move it to another meeting for the discussion, or could we make those amendments now?
From my perspective, it is on the council agenda. It's subject for council action. If there were a motion to be made to amend the item before the council, that would be up to the council then to dispose of the matter what you wished.
Councilmember Deets, and then Councilmember Schneider.
Sure. Thank you for bringing this up. The, I think, if I recall, these amendments were brought to us by the Ethics Board, and I see no reason why, you know, I think your comments are well-taken, that we could go back to them and say, what do you think? I think that certainly, at first point, you know, someone has left the council, why would we have a complaint made against them? So we could do it either one of two ways, just approve what we have, and then go back to the Ethics Board to say, here's a couple other areas for you to consider, or... Okay, maybe there's two choices. Or we just vote it as is and be done with it, or we take this, your comments, back to the Ethics Board and have it get their opinion. That last version, I don't think there's a rush, in my view, for this, so I have no objection to passing this to the Ethics Board for their consideration.
Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. I support Councilmember Hytopolis's suggestions. It feels to me that they are really in line with the intent. And potentially, you know, the Ethics Committee may not have wanted to go as far as what's being suggested right now. I mean, obviously, there, it is pulling both ways. So it's not as if we're trying to protect ourselves in any, you know. So I don't see a problem with making the amendments, and, you know, it is our document. You know, it is our decision in the end. So for expediency, I would say that we ought to be able to make the decision now.
Thanks, Councilor Schneider. Councilmember Morawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. That'd be my thought as well. I would assume, and I can't open up the thing for some reason, that the Ethics, I mean, the Ethics Commission has looked at this already. So I believe they've had their thoughts on it. I could be wrong, but I would just presume that. But I do agree with Councilmember Schneider, we should look at this. And I think Councilmember Hytopolis has brought up a reasonable concern. So at least at this moment, it's off the consent agenda, and we can either look at it at a future meeting, or we could address it later in tonight's meeting, however you folks want to see it, but I would like to see it. Talked among us.
Thanks, Councilmember Morawaki. Can you repeat, like, I got confused. Okay, I remember what it is with the former, not a former, but what's the second?
The second one has to do with, and this is where I think you might want some drafting from somebody, the City Manager or the Ethics Board, and we might want to just send it back, is just to make sure that we're capturing that it's not one year, a citizen is not prohibited from making a complaint one year after the offense, if the offense was later discovered. And again, this may just capture some small, but it seems like a strange distinction to make. And I think we know, these were brought forward because of some issues we had before, where there were some really unfair process actions taken. They agreed that they were unfair. But yeah, I wouldn't want to wordsmith that, or I think that if everyone's okay with it, and it would also give them some deference to send it back to them and ask them to consider these, and then make sure it doesn't go against their intent and have a chance to draft those in.
That's, yep, exactly.
Yeah, so I would like to make a motion that the council send this back with those comments to the Ethics Board.
One second.
Great, okay. So motion made by Councilmember Hytopolis, seconded by Councilmember Deets. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, okay. Thank you, and now on to 5I.
Yeah, and I will try to be really succinct because I understand that you guys spent time on this, I think, the last, the main, last meeting, last business meeting. I just, so I might not be able to get my questions answered, so we'll see. One concern I had in the, this is in the actual new policy, is that there is a reference to critical areas, but it doesn't distinguish which kind of critical areas. So I don't know if anybody could tell me whether maybe we're talking about not just sensitive bodies of water, but also talking about liquefaction areas and steep slopes, and the lack of specification concerns me. And I just want to make sure we were intentionally capturing 100 feet from all of those as the exception. Might not be able to get it...
Mayor, if I could call in the Public Works Director to provide clarification.
May be counsel.
Deputy Counsel, Chris Worsicki, Public Works Director. Heard you correctly, the question was, did we specify which critical areas by which the 100-foot buffer applies? We did not. So right now it applies to all critical areas unless we just were to specify some specific one.
Good, Councilwoman Hytopolis. So my concern is, is that in the area surrounding limit center, we have liquefaction areas, we have critical slopes and we have critical body of water. The 100 feet around that could be just about, I don't know for sure, but most of the properties. So I don't know that that was the point. The point we had to do with, what I brought up when I brought this up was bodies of water. We were trying to protect Puget Sound. Again, I mean, the council may not have the, the interest in further amending this, but I find that overly broad. And again, I mean, if somebody else agrees in the midst to make a motion to do something, I'd appreciate it. I realize again, I am late to the party since I missed the meeting. And the other question was just, I, I appreciate the fact that we have the Kitsap Public Health District being the decision maker as to whether or what, whether the standard is met for a failing or soon to be failing system. But I guess what I was trying to understand is, is that a thing? And this may be hard to answer, but I've never heard of this as a, as a, as a thing, soon to be failing. So it seems like we've still defined it as soon to be failing unless that's something that is in the sewer world, a septic thing, septic world of thing. So I thought what we're going to do is say, we will let the city, we will let the Kitsap Public Health District decide whether or not this was a failing septic, but we still have the soon to be failing. So that's my question. Where is, is that a term of art? Are we setting the public, are we setting KPOD up for, not KPOD, sorry, is it probably held up for, what is that? I don't know what that is. Yeah.
Yeah, so we define soon to be failing as no more than one year from failing. So something that is probably not going to be easily replaced is, it is not a definition that the Kitsap Health District uses. It's something we just developed to try to, try to prevent the situation from becoming an emergency if there was a known issue.
Okay. So impending doom.
If I could make a suggestion, if the council was interested in approving the policy tonight, we'd be, you know, we could make an amendment to your motion suggesting that we change critical area buffers to shoreline and wetland critical area buffers, which would probably, I think, make, satisfy that change.
I would make that motion if.
Yep. Okay.
One second.
So motion made by Councilmember Hytopolis, seconded by Councilmember Morawaki, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Good, okay. And with that, we are on to.
So I want to verify that with the approval of the policy as amended.
Councilmember Hytopolis, did you make it? Were you good?
Yep, I think.
The way I understand, if City Attorney corrected, that that motion was to approve the policy as amended with the critical areas being refined to wetlands.
Shall I, I can read it? Or did someone read it already? Right, okay. So I would.
Okay, no, we're good. I think we're good. Okay, now we are on to council announcements. And Councilwoman Dietz.
Oh, thank you. Just, just a few things. Had a, there was a Memorial Day ceremony at the high school football field just yesterday and myself, Mayor, was there, said some very moving words to the audience and Councilman Morawaki was there. And it was just a very beautiful day and a very powerful event. Let's see. I had my office hours last Saturday, had a great discussion on traffic with a constituent. My next office hours are on June 7th, so everyone's welcome to see me. This Friday, I have a, as part of the intergovernmental step program on housing, this is a City of Polesbo led so far ad hoc committee, which we participate in on sort of emergency housing, if you will. There's what was called a listening session on Friday, which I'll be taking part on. And then the Bainbridge Island Police Department Awards are this Friday and I think some, myself and some of us, others are going, so that is my report.
And Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. So the, a number of us went to the Puget Sound Regional Council Annual Meeting and I was thrilled to see that their, that the keynote speaker was talking about safety. I've been bringing back reports to, to this council about the focus on safety and how we are going in the wrong direction. So it's just becoming more and more clear that whatever we're doing isn't working. And I don't, I'm pretty sure those are recorded. It was, it was great. I would, if you're interested in diving in, he's a dynamic speaker. I think he was like a deputy US Department of Transportation, duh, anyway. He went through a lot of different roles. They were pretty impressive. And then on the, on the fun side, just today, I have been meaning for a while to go over to Seattle and do a bike ride on the waterfront trail and, and then all the way to Ballard just to kind of experience, you know, what's new on the, on the bike infrastructure there. And so we did it today. And I just have to say, it was so great being on separated trails, bi-directional trails for the most part. There's still a couple little gutches where, that are going to get fixed in the next year with a detour around the cruise lines. But it was, it was really great. So I'm just hoping that we get that kind of a feel here on, on the island. And then my last quick announcement is that I will miss the next business meeting. I will be in Providence, Rhode Island for the Strong Towns Conference. And anybody that wants to chat with me about Strong Towns, what it is, happy to, happy to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman Schneider. Councilmember Morawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. And having lived in the waterfront for a year, quite a mile past, I took that route a lot. It really is beautiful because it's flat right along the shoreline. It's quite lovely. Thank you, Councilmember Dietz for mentioning the Memorial Day Ceremony yesterday. And then also Mayor Matthews. I thought it was fascinating that they read it and one of the officers of the American Legion read it. And upon reflection, I think it was really more powerful, having one of their members read our words and proclamation. And I don't know what you guys felt about moving, but the part moved me was the part when no one was talking. We had a moment of silence when they rang all 24 bells for each person who passed and of course taps. And then after that, they had another ceremony at the Bud Hock Memorial Park at the Collin Hyde Post 172. And I attended that plus a potluck and clearly those people don't starve. So it was, and these beautiful cakes. So a couple of things I was involved in Saturday. I attended a Eagle Scout Court of Honor for a young fellow named Julian Roger. And he interviewed me two years ago for his citizenship and the community merit badge. And I told him then, when you get your ego, please invite me. And he told me that phrase kept him going because now there's an expectation that he'd have to get metal. And it was really fantastic. Two other Eagles were there. It's a, it's a really wonderful thing. And he brought up, they asked the audience, oh, Eagle Scouts to come forward. And there was 18 of us, parents, cousins, it was a bunch. It was really fun. And I remembered the scout rose and the scout law just came back, thank goodness, reading out loud. This Thursday, or is it Thursday? Yeah. There's going to be a listening session by Low Income Housing Institute at the Bainbridge Island Performing Arts. And I know a lot of our folks are going there and it's about the housing project that's going to be proposed at the former police station site. And this Wednesday, as you heard earlier about the Arts and Humanities and Public Arts Programs, the Asian Heritage Program. Wednesday is going to be Japanese Heritage. There's going to be a wonderful film called A Fighting Irishman about an attorney who spent years giving hundreds of Japanese and Japanese Americans their citizenship rights back. And I've never seen the documentary, but I'm really eager to watch it and I'll be on the speaking panel after that event. And this morning I went to my first Housing Kitsap Board. Councilmember Franklin Johnson used to serve on that. I got sworn in and interestingly, they gave an update on the properties here on Bainbridge Island and the Rota Dendron Apartments. There are 50 total units and only eight vacant with about 200 people on the waiting list. Finch Place Apartments has 29 units, only four vacant and about 180 people on the waiting list. This is just saying, segueing to this meeting we're going to have Thursday. If you don't think we need affordable housing on this island, there's waiting lists. I don't think we're going to have a problem filling, you know, all these units. And there's one coming on the way. It's over in Blakely Harbor. It's called the Southern Cross. And they just passed their National Environment and Protection Act assessment and they're working on the specifications for bidding. This is going to be two build, two houses, two buildings, both three bedroom, two bath and with two accessory dwelling units. So a total of six, 10, 10 units that'll be available sometime in the future. And they're going to be new housing and it's in a very upscale kind of cul-de-sac. So this is great that we're mixing housing and, and incomes and it's no longer exclusive. And I think that was, I think that was caught us with that development to have that as affordable. So this is, there are some things moving forward that we should be really proud of on the island. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor?
Well, the mayor and I both participated in an event in two places on Friday, the 23rd. Battlepoint Park to, it was quite a ceremonial occasion in connection with the recognition of the work of cryptographers during, well, prior to and then across the history of World War II. We have a place in the history of cryptography and the before, before the opening up of cyberspace. Now things are different, but there is a still a robust group of people with a history going back to the 1930s and, and the World War II years. Bainbridge, of course, knew somewhat in advance of the attack on Torrel Harbor. Not in such a way that it could have been prevented, but authorities in Washington DC were prepared for the visit of the Japanese ambassadors and they, they, they knew how to respond as the event happened and so on. And the history of this on Bainbridge has, has been vague in my mind. But those two places, the Battlepoint Park was the installation where cryptographers lived and served and did their work across a wide spectrum, not so much, not so famous as the, the seizing of, of communications and so on. Then there was a following segment to the program at Fort Ward, which was of course the other part of this detection system that worked so well for us in a, in a, in a sense of, you know, just knowing what had to be known. And a great deal was, of course, prevented by this kind of vigilance. And the people on the island with connections with this, it's, it's, it's a piece of our history that is worthy of recognition. I thought that the mayor spoke wonderfully at both of those events to recognize just how, how important in our, in our city's history this is. Another event on Saturday of a different sort at the Bainbridge Island Museum of Art. A capacity crowd in the auditorium responded to a, the initiatives taken by students in our high school. Partners in Health, which is a global organization, has these chapters in, in colleges and universities and in the unusual high schools such as ours, raising funds and raising awareness of the need for global education. It's, it's not only the, the, you know, life-saving work, but the, the building of infrastructure in less developed parts of the world. So there's a focus for each of these initiatives year by year. This was Partners in Health celebrating Partners in Poetry. And it was a wonderful, wonderful group of people, including our poet laureate and poets from, from Seattle as well and a group of high school students here who have, you know, acted their values through and found ways of, of raising their voices as really fledgling artists in this, in this area. I was impressed and the amount of money raised in the event was really astonishing and in the thousands of dollars. So this is, this is a piece of our culture that I'm very happy to be a part of as a member of the council.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. So Thursday, Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly. Friday was the Naval Cryptologist Veterans Association, one of the coolest experiences I've had. It was just beautiful. And the history involved, I just read this book, The Rose Cold, Rose Code by Kate Quinn, which dealt with the European version of this and the Bletchley and the code breakers and, and these were just mostly older folks who traveled from all over the country. One was coming from England, all over 70, so it probably wasn't the easiest trip for everyone. Most of the work that they did was done in secret and done in silence. And so to be able to recognize them was even more impactful. So that was really special. And then there's the poetry slam on, it's Saturday. It was really great to see the youth. And then Memorial Day at Bainbridge High School was very, very moving and then upcoming is the Lee High Public Event on Thursday at 3:00. Bainbridge Island Police Department Awards on Friday and the Saquamish Foundation fundraiser is Thursday evening, a time to gather. So lots going on and sunshine. And with that, on to our next item, which is City Manager's Board.
And I have no report for the council.
And now we are on to regular business. First item is providing an update on the review process and schedule for the groundwater management plan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Worsicki to give the council a presentation. We, you'll note there is no recommendation offered, however, part of the presentation is that we will be giving you a new schedule for the consideration of the comments and response, comments related to the groundwater management plan. And that may be something the council may want to acknowledge, that addition, extension of comment period. But with that, Mr. Worsicki, we'll go ahead and make a presentation to you.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Council. Chris Worsicki, Public Works Director. This evening, I'm going to present to you, oh, looks like our slide's a little something going on with it, update on the groundwater management plan, process and schedule. Tell you a little bit about the engagement schedule we have planned, give you an update on the deliverables that we are working on and also give you an update on the peer review selection. And just a reminder, we've been talking about the groundwater management plan in terms of three different drafts. The first draft is the one that was published on the website about a month ago. That was a rough cut that we've been reviewing with the committees. We've had two meetings with both the subcommittee and the technical advisory committee in taking their comments in. Comments that we've received are included in your packet. The second draft is a more refined document that will be ready for a formal review period and a public engagement meeting. And we'll talk about that schedule in just a minute. We're anticipating right now to have that draft ready for you, your meeting on July 8th. And then a final will be complete for adoption at late summer, early fall. This is what the schedule looks like. Does not want to go to the schedule for some reason. Try again. Oh, there we go. You'll see, we presented the first draft there in April. The red line is where we are today. We've had four committee meetings, as I mentioned, we've had over 40 pages of comments. There are a lot of comments to address. As much as I would have liked to have you draft this sooner, there's a lot of work to do still. And we want to address all those comments and really make this a credible document for the community. So we want to take the time to do that. We are adding a little bit to the consultant's contract to help us get through this comment period. We are adding a little bit to the consultant's contract to help us get through this comment period and address all of those forty pages of comments. But we are still planning on trying to have a second draft available on that meeting in July eighth. You'll see the star there in the middle of the chart. Holding a public outreach meeting on July twenty-third. That's the current scheduled date for that meeting here at City Hall. And revise and have a final draft for you ready and brought mid-September. I know this is too small to see, but I did want you to know that we are working on a management actions matrix. So this is a real heart of the plan that includes all the different actions that we, management actions that will be coming out of the information that we learn about from, from the groundwater management plan itself. There are fifteen categories with actions and recommendations included, and we're breaking that down into three-year increments so that we can develop a work plan and a budget for you to consider as the plan is adopted. So that is in progress. We're also developing a public-facing summary. So if you remember when we developed the stormwater system plan, we developed a ten-page summary memo that included highlights from the plan that was over, you know, two hundred and fifty pages long. This will be a very similarly kind of overwhelming document for the public to read. So we are developing this public-facing summary that we can also use to engage the public at that meeting on July twenty-third. Lastly, I did want to highlight that we reviewed the credentials from the potential peer reviewers. And both committees, although some were reticent to want to provide a recommendation, overhaul, the committees were interested in having Karen Bureau, who's a retired hydrogeologist. She was recommended by Saquamish Tribe as, as performing the review. Karen is available to do this work. She's, we've been in correspondence about developing a peer review scope. There was a draft provided in your packet, but there are some more details that need to go into that. We would plan to present you with that scope of work on July eighth, along with the second draft of the report, so that you could make a motion to authorize that peer review at that time, and that we could have the final draft and the peer review ready for your review late summer, early fall. And that is my update. We welcome your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Councilmember Hytopolis and Councilmember Murawaki.
Yeah, well, based on the emails that we received from a couple of committee members that we all received in the last couple of days, I think it's important that we, I would like the council to request the city manager direct that all attachments to comments be integrated into the compilation of comments that are going to ultimately, I hope, the peer reviewer. That's the second part of what I hope we're suggesting or directing. So anyway, I'd like, that's my comment, but I hope that we as a body will request that all the attachments will be integrated, and I would like that compilation to come to council and to the committee members so everyone can see what it is that has been compiled and that that is directed to the peer reviewer at the perfect time.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you, Mary Matthews. To City Manager, Ms. Bureau, who has been recommended peer reviewer, is this pro bono work, or are we going to be compensated for her time?
Through the chair? No, she will be compensated.
We have an amount?
We are in the recommendation. It's not in the recommendation, but there's a reference to increasing the budget about twenty thousand.
So that was a twenty K reference? Okay, thanks a lot. And the Public Works Director was being kind. It's actually closer to fifty pages. It's forty-seven. And four hundred and sixty-seven comments. And some of these, some of these comments are like just a quarter page by themselves. So this is a ton of work that is brought in, and I want these public comments to be considered. But we're also trying to get this done as quickly as possible, so it's, we're asking a lot of this process to work. Because a lot of people put in a lot of effort in these comments, some of them individually pages by themselves. So I just want to make sure that, as Councilmember Hytopolis said, that these comments are, are reviewed and given due consideration. But I also want to throw out that that may also add a little time to getting this product before us. I want to do both. I don't think, yeah, it's overwhelming. It's probably a word that's going to be said a lot here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dietz.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And I, I would agree with Councilmember Hytopolis to incorporate all the, the comments with, for the peer reviewer. That, that certainly makes sense. Hope folks had a chance to read this. It's, it's, it's actually a good read. I, I found, I'll just say, to be candid, some inconsistencies of where someone could cherry pick sections of the report and come up with a particular conclusion, and then pick another part of the report and come up with a different conclusion. So hopefully these sort of inconsistencies can be ironed out. But I am very much looking forward to this. It's a lot of work, but we have to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I've got a few comments on where we are now, and we're still far from what is referred to in the schedule as a final draft. I guess it's right to call it a final draft rather than a final product. We're working now on something that is going to be worked with, worked upon for years to come. And it's really important to recognize that monitoring is a process, management is a process. I feel, looking back a ways, there were some faults found with the process in delays and breakdowns or gaps in communication among the various interested parties and the scientists involved in doing this drafting process. Now, I'm confident that the massive amount of revision that is called for, that that will be done, and we will have a different draft in fairly short order and something that the, the, the community needs to understand at a deeper level than is possible now. Not only what we're studying, but how we're planning to manage our resources. One of the things that has kind of hung over our thinking about water for a long time, there was a very highly advertised question, do we have enough water? I've come to feel that was never the right question to be asking. The question that we need to be asking is, is the city managing the resources? Are we, are we adequately studying and taking care of, taking the steps that can be, can be done to not only conserve, but to understand more and more fully what our resources are? Because they are in many ways, and we don't know the extent to which they are renewable resources, and how to best manage the, the use of those resources and the return of water to the aquifers to the extent that that is possible. All of that is going forward, and I think taking the time that it takes to get all of that done and being patient with the process. I've heard people just banging a drum of skeptical skepticism about our resources, skepticism about our capacity to live within our means. That, that's kind of scary, and I don't think it serves us well as a community to be sort of tugging at, at whatever appears to be an unanswerable question or, or a question that's being answered wrong and so on. So I really think it's important that we all recognize this has a place in our planning and an important place as we manage a whole lot of other planning that has to go along in, in tandem and in concert with, with all of our attempts to best, to make our best use of what we have.
Councilmember Hytopolis?
Yeah, just real quick, I guess I want to just add a comment on top of my request, and that is that the way we address fear, doubt, skepticism, all of these things, right, is with facts. And the way, and, and being sure that people have been heard. And so I just want to put that behind why my request is so strong about making sure that all the comments, particularly from our committees that have touched the product, right, they're not just every comment out there, but that if we want to be able to look at people and say, you know what, the people who are, our council has no staff, which the public should know. And the closest thing to our hydrologists on staff are our committees. And I want to be sure that their comments, we can look at them and say, we know your comments went to the peer reviewer and to the consultants working on the, on the draft, and they were considered, and the result takes those into consideration, and that is our best way to take care of that. And so we appear are laypeople needing to rely heavily on this document and needing to know that it has great credibility. So I may be just repeating the obvious, but I think it's, it's so important that we do do the extra work to make sure that all those comments get there.
Thank you, Councilmember Hytopolis. Okay, so no more lights on. We're going to go on to the next item on our agenda, which is introducing Resolution twenty-two-five dash twelve, adopting updates to the water sewer and storm and surface water management utility rates.
Thank you, Mayor. This, the action proposed for the council is to introduce, not adopt, the resolution that would establish new fees for water sewer, storm and surface water. This is an outgrowth of a twenty-two-three study that the council first considered, looking at major infrastructure upgrades. It came to the council May thirteenth and May twentieth. There's a slight typo you may notice in the staff report references. Today's date is twenty-seventh. It shouldn't be May thirteenth and May twentieth. Chris Worsicki is going to present to you again the information that you have seen before, both thirteenth and twentieth. Along, he's joined with members of the Utility Advisory Committee, which spent a lot of time evaluating and providing the recommendations of the council with regard to the rates.
Thank you, City Manager. Chris Worsicki, Public Works Director. I was actually not going to present the information again this evening because we had two opportunities to present this information to you on two previous council dates. I did, however, want to introduce at least one member of the Utility Advisory Committee who came today to offer some comments on the process, the review process that they spent with us over seven meetings, with staff and the consultant developing these recommendations. If you're open to considering their comments, I'll introduce them to the, to the podium. Okay.
Evening. There's my height. I'm Ted Jones. I'm one of the co-chairs of the UAC, and I'm not going to talk directly to the material because I think that's all very well organized. I just want to do a just give an insight for you and the general public about how the process works from the UAC's perspective. We've been working with this contractor and this process for three or four rate reviews now, and I think it's a very smooth process. I invite everybody to look at the meetings that we have. We've gone over this rates, these rates in seven meetings so far, and it's a very collaborative process. We offer suggestions, and the contractor either is very able to make adjustments on the fly and show us what ifs right in the very detailed tables you'll see at the end of his report, or he'll have them for us in the following week. So that's why we were able to, after going through all of that, say that we support the recommendations of the contractor and the Public Works Director.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hytopolis?
Yeah, well, I want two questions. One is, I thought there was a reference to us seeing a memo from the UAC in the packet, but I couldn't find it. Yeah. So we don't, we're not approving this tonight. I would really appreciate seeing that memo.
That is true. The memo did accompany, I will say, on May thirteenth to May twentieth, the memo was included, and I apologize that memo was omitted from the twenty-seventh version.
Okay.
But again, it is attached to the thirteenth and twentieth.
Okay. And then I had a specific question about the rate, let's see, it's Exhibit A, I think, connection fees. I was just noticing, I'm just wondering what the reasoning was behind why we have increases for the smaller capacity lines, but we have decreases for the larger in both residential and commercial, and they're kind of notable. And so I'm wondering what the policy issues, if any, here are for our consideration, because it looks like we're giving a break to ourselves or to a big developer, but I mean, I really don't know. Six-inch lines, one hundred and ninety-two from two thirty-seven, three-quarter inch lines to, from sevens to tens. So any background I could get from either the Public Works Director or from the city manager about why we're decreasing the big lines?
The answer to that question is really complicated, and I don't remember, you don't remember the answer, but we all asked it of the consultant and said, why are, why are these changes? So if, we'll present that to you at the following meeting on the tenth before you adopt this. So thank you for asking.
Thanks, Director. Deputy Mayor?
If I may, I'd like to move the resolution at this time. I'd move to forward ordinance twenty-two-five dash sixteen, adopting, I'm sorry, this is, I've got two things here. Move to forward Resolution twenty-two-five dash twelve, adopting updates to the water sewer and storm and surface water management utility rates to the June tenth, twenty-twenty-five, regular business meeting for adoption.
Motion made by Deputy Mayor Quitzl, seconded by Councilmember Dietz. All those in favor?
Aye.
May opposed? Nope. Okay. Next is item eight C.
Yes, Mayor, a companion to a degree to the consideration of the rates is an expansion of the rate reduction program for low-income customers. Again, we'd like to present this to the council. It's referenced at the previous meetings that that would be brought to you. It's intended to provide relief for low-income residents. And again, we're asking the council to, in this case, introduce the ordinance, not adopt it, but the Public Works Director or Mr. Pitts will describe this proposal.
Thank you, City Manager. Council, if you'll remember, from two meetings ago, we discussed how the city staff and the Utility Advisory Committee used our racial equity lens to evaluate the rate increase and the rate evaluation process. The toolkit advised us to collect data and engage the community on this issue. So we performed a survey of all of our utility customers, received almost five, almost six hundred responses to that survey. And based on the results, we made some recommendations to our current low-income program, which can be summarized as two general points. One is to reduce, to eliminate the age and the disability requirements from the low-income program and have the program strictly be income-based, which at one time was not allowed by law, but is now. And the second is to create three brackets of rate reduction depending on income that is developed by the Kitsap County Assessor's Office. The Kitsap County has a low-income, low-income property tax deferral program, and they use three different thresholds of income to define that program. So our program would be directly related to those income thresholds that are determined by the assessor every three years. Depending on your income between zero and sixty-five thousand dollars per year, a customer could be eligible for either a fifty, a fifty-five, or a sixty percent reduction in rates. This ordinance would take effect on January first, along with the potential rate increases, which would give us a little bit of time to figure out how to administer this program and be able to do some outreach to folks and get them signed up. Right now, we have about seventy customers signed up for the current program. We anticipate there could be as many as another seventy or so customers that could benefit from this new program. Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Yeah, through the chair, I think it's important we tell you that there's about a one percent differential. The proposed low-income program would cause about a one percent deficit terms of lost revenue, and that one percent then is embedded in the rates that are proposed in front of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Murawaki?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to move it and have people speak to it if you wish. I moved forward ordinance number twenty-two-five sixteen, adopting revisions to the Bainbridge National Minnesota Code thirteen point sixteen to expand the utility rate reduction program to all low-income customers to the June tenth, twenty-twenty-five, regular business meeting for adoption.
A great motion made by Councilmember Murawaki, seconded by Councilmember Dietz.
I'd like to speak to it.
Of course.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. You know, when you look at the ordinance under Section 113.16.080, as the Public Works Director pointed out, it said senior citizen. And everywhere that's been written, it's, we've crossed it out and put in customer. And I think that's really important, not to say that senior citizens and those who maybe have disabilities and such, but they might also be in that low income area. But it's also, we're working so hard to have affordable housing on this island. And this is one of the things that helps keep people off the island, higher rates. And so if this is something that can help move and keep that demographic on our island, it's also a great idea as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Murawaki. And I just wanted to say very quickly that I think I used this example over the weekend somewhere. I don't remember where it was, but how impressed I am with your group, with the Utility Advisory Committee, the folks on it, using the Equity Toolkit to come up with something so needed for our community. It was just unbelievably cool that that was the method and the way that it's put into, that it was put into practice. So it was a really good success story. So thank you. Okay, all, did we vote? All those in favor?
Yes, do.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you. All right, with that, we are on to 8D.
Mayor, yes. 8D, the issue before the council, the proposition before the council is to consider the introduction of an ordinance that would prohibit the use of gasoline and diesel powered leaf blowers effective July 1, 2027. Would point out the ordinance is drafted by the city attorney. The ordinance in French, you only applies to leaf blowers, no other hand tools. Are there no restrictions on day or time of use? A leaf blower pursuant to the ordinance is defined as a tool that propels air out of its nozzle opening to move debris. The ordinance only reflecting the leaf blower does reflect the recommendation of the Race Equity Advisory Committee and the Climate Advisory Committee. And there was a little presentation that, waiting to see if we can get that, but up. The consideration of the ordinance that would restrict leaf blowers in this case is an outgrowth of a previous 2018 analytical effort of a city in which it was analyzed about 6,500 gallons of fuel was consumed per year by the city for gas powered equipment for vegetation. From that, the city began a process transition. All of the city or most of the cities gasoline powered hand tools to electric. That took a while primarily because of supply chain issues coming out of COVID. But the city has transitioned to electric hand tools for landscape maintenance. The only tool I know of is some, is a tool that's held in reserve for some unknown reason. In other words, it hasn't been used and no one can explain to me why it is still at the ONM yard. During the 2225 timeframe, the city considered a citywide initiative with a broader range of tools. During the review and the discussion of that ordinance, it was deemed too, too broad and that the ordinance suggests just be brought down to gas powered leaf blowers. Gas powered leaf blowers are fairly dirty pieces of equipment and generate a lot of noise that typically generates complaints from the public. The Race Equity Commission and Climate Change recommended that the ordinance be limited to leaf blowers, and that is what's being presented to you now. The reasons for this are in the next slide. The basic data that we have, and it is true that no original research went into this. We have gleaned this information from secondary sources. According to the EPA, gasoline powered diesel powered leaf blowers emit a wide variety of air pollutants, including nitrogen oxides, particulate matter, and carbon dioxide. A particular statistic that is referenced quite frequently in the literature, one sees on this is one hour of running a gasoline powered leaf blower can contribute as much smog forming pollution as driving a faster car about 1,100 miles, which is equal from driving from Seattle to Santa Barbara, California. There are health effects that come from gas and diesel powered leaf blowers, asthma, hearing loss, and other health issues. And as I mentioned before, the gas powered leaf blowers in terms of gas powered hand tools, the leaf blower generates the most complaints from the public. The ordinance itself, in terms of what it does, as we've talked about, that the leaf blower is a tool that propels air out of the nozzle opening. This ordinance does not apply to any other tools except the leaf blower. There are no limitations on time of day of use. You could use it anytime of use. I say that because previously, a previous discussion version of this ordinance had time limitations. We did include what I thought were reasonable, common sense pieces that you can't with any type of leaf blower dump debris in the street or storm drains or on other property that's not yours. In other words, you can't push this. Emergency responders during emergencies are exempted. One of the pieces here is that enforcement is against property owners, not the operator of the equipment who or the person who controls the property, who knowingly allows the equipment to be used. And again, knowingly allows. And into the ordinance is written that the first offense is a warning, then escalating civil citations. The effective date of this ordinance is July 1, 2027, approximately two years if this ordinance were adopted on cycle from the council to allow people to transition to this. People that are opposed to this would reference the general sense that they don't feel that leaf blowers that are electric have enough strength for power for their needs, that batteries are, have to be frequently changed. Some people will say that the city should engage in consultation process with commercial landscapers. PSC has asked that they be considered an emergency organization. However, quite frankly, I'm not quite sure of how PSC uses a leaf blower to restore power when power is out as an emergency. Again, this is, it's been an evolution over a period of time, a three to four year period of time. We have come down from a variety of equipment to just one piece of equipment, and that's the gasoline diesel powered leaf blower.
Thank you, City Manager. First, Councilmember Murawaki, then Councilwoman Dietz, and then Councilmember Hightower.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. And first to the City Manager, you mentioned a dollar amount would be saved in gasoline and fuel. What was that amount you said? 60?
Well, through the chair, what we referenced previously that it was estimated that the city consumed about 6,500 gallons of fuel annually from gas powered hand tools. Using landscaping.
That's us.
Yes, that's just the municipal corporation.
That's just us, not all of the other landscapers and the rest. 65,000 times, I'm just doing a math, that's tens of thousands of dollars in just fuel savings. Another point, I'm glad that the Race Equity Advisory Committee was involved. And typically, when discussion is about environmental justice, in the past, it's been because marginalized communities and communities of color even got to LGBTQ sometimes, they get placed into zoning areas that are not desirable next to polluting industries or noisy freeways or airports or things like that. And I think the, the intent of environmental justice is to eliminate that. But part of that is clearly this, that they're often near places of pollution, polluted rivers, next to a coal plant. And this is something that is being carried by a person that in our views has more emissions than a thousand mile trip. That's extraordinary. So if you want some environmental justice, how about the health of the people who run these things? And that's something that's really key on my mind. And one other thought that got blown away by the leaf blower. Or the other, the other thing is really the noise. We don't talk about that very much, but my goodness, sometimes it sounds like a war zone on the weekends around here. So, you know, for peace of mind and just quality of life, it would probably add a lot if we could have quieter devices. Thank you, Mayor.
You, Councilmember Dietz, and then Councilmember Hightower.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mayor. And I will advocate for adding on the exemption side for the utility operations during emergencies. And I did have a chance to talk with Christine Non, our government, PSC's Government Affairs Person. And the reason I'm advocating for that extension of the emergency provision is that, you know, we do have power outages on this island. And every time you, if you lose your power, you want that back on right away, right? Speak from personal experience, right? And when there's debris and there's power lines, it's very important. As the City Manager said, why would that be important during emergency for utilities? They need to clear the debris to, to obtain where the damage is, is in terms of power lines. And they want to do it quickly and safely. So I would say in an emergency situation, I think this makes sense. We want to keep people safe. We want to get people's power back on. We're really not losing anything here other than if we don't have this, it makes it more difficult to get power back on in an emergency. So I, my, I would advocate for that. And I'll just say, yes, the noise is terrible. I could hear my neighbors crew whenever they come in every week. And yeah, the noise is a problem. So this has been, I'll tell you, this, this discussion has been going on for some time. I can't remember when we first talked, like five years. I don't know. It's been a very long time. So I'd like to just move forward and get this done with that exception. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hytopolis.
Yeah, so I want, I want to be sure, since this is still somewhat controversial, even though I think we are, we have, we said we're targeting the biggest offender across many fronts of lawn equipment beyond just the carbon issue. But there are a couple, there are two points I kind of wish we could tighten up in the language and the whereas clauses. On the subject of noisy, we have are less noisy. And the fact is, they are usually less noisy. I just don't, I want us to do this really well. I don't want us to be properly accused of any, of exaggerating. I guess that if you look at the decibels kind of overlap, or most of them are, but they're not always less noisy. So to be frank, I wish we would say are usually less noisy, because we have lots of things going for us here that are true. And the other one, I just have a question about, because I may be missing something, but in the purpose, it says the purpose of this chapter is to control dust and other airborne pollutants, reduce health hazards, et cetera, et cetera. But all, all of these blowers are going to blow dust. And so I don't know that we're reducing dust unless I'm missing something here. And again, I don't want to say we're doing something we're not. I fully support it and voting for it, but I don't want it to be, you know, picked at as something that's not correct. So I would suggest we remove dust and we just say that we're saying is to control airborne pollutants, reduce health hazards, et cetera.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, I was going to make a similar comment that we shouldn't oversell the noise reduction because I was, I was near a, an electric one recently, and I was going, yeah, it's not quiet. So I definitely appreciate us being careful about the expectations since noise is one of the biggest ones that we, we hear about. And then the other, I don't know, this is not hugely important, but I just wonder to what extent are we being a leader in this area? You know, how many other communities have done this already? I mean, I was kind of expecting the state to come forward with, you know, saying that we're not going to sell them, sell gas blowers and whatnot, and then let them sort of phase out on their own. But then that didn't happen. So, you know, I mean, maybe we are nudging, you know, the legislature to, to get more done as well. So I just wanted to bring that up. I don't know if we're a leader or not, but I think it would be awesome if again we were. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. And a dovetail to Councilmember Dietz's comment, I think it's a wise comment. The ordinance 16.14.050, it's exemption for emergency responders. And it lists police, fire, public works, emergency responders for the purpose of responding to emergency situations, including but not limited to the clearing of downed trees, brush debris in areas needing expedient clearing for the safety of the public. I think Peter Sound Energy can make a really strong case that that's exactly what they're doing, that these trees, the reason why they're there is a damn tree fell down and is blocking the road. And they're expected to clear that as well as get to where the downed wires are. I don't think that, I think we could just simply say, you know, utility providers or something, it wouldn't take that much to make it fit. So I think that was a good decision, a good suggestion. Mayor, Councilmember Dietz.
Thanks, Councilmember Murawaki.
Okay, seeing no more lights, I guess I will go. So I this one's tough for me. I want to support this. I am still really thinking about the sign ordinance, not to be salty still. And the ferries come in and it's crowded ferries. And I watch them all turn the opposite way from our shop and go down the street to the other yarn shop. And then I see things online from the Green Pot, the person who runs Green Pot Deli, that she can't get customers down there and Blue House Interiors and all the.
Point of order.
And so.
Point of order, Mayor. How does this relate to the topic of leaf blowers?
I'm getting there, sorry. And so I think sometimes we make decisions that affect our public and business owners in ways that we don't always think about. And so in this case, I would support a resolution. If you look at City of Seattle's, that we were sent today from someone, it's not an ordinance, it's a resolution stating that they are establishing goals to phase out gas powered leaf blowers. And so that's as far as I'm comfortable going at this point. I would like us to make a resolution that it's a goal of ours to phase these out. I've got a chance to try some on. I've talked to landscapers. And it just, right now seems to be something that we would be doing to our small business owners, most of them BIPOC and Latina and Hispanic, that is just, to me, it's not right now. So I would support a resolution. And I was even thinking about supporting it because with parcels, say, that were under half an acre or something like that, but there are HOAs for that. And Bainbridge Island is an agricultural community. I spend each day somehow out on the farm, listening to all of these machines and in my head, trying to picture how a plug in or an electric leaf blower can do the work when you're make a half mile away from, and just to me, I don't see it. And I'm sorry, I want to support, but I would support a resolution.
Through the, through the chair, the response to the question of how common is this? Through a website called TechPrig, their information is that cities in 26 states already have restricted or prohibited the use of some type of gas leak powered lawn tools. It has been considered, but has not passed in the state legislature, the state of Washington, although the state of California has passed prohibition against the sale of any new small engine horsepower under 25 horsepower for glass, and that's effective now.
Thanks, City Manager. Councilmember Hytopolis.
Yeah, I guess I feel this kind of ties into what Councilwoman Schneider was saying a moment ago about leadership. I think that we have been leaders before on similar issues. We were, we were leaders long, long ago, before I was ever on city council banning styrofoam containers, actually. Not sure we did a very good job of enforcing it for years, but we did. And when we banned plastic bags, we were ahead of many, many cities in this country. I think this is, this is something, this is where we're all headed. I don't think there's any question about that. And I am, I don't have a problem being, demonstrating leadership on this. This was an accommodation to go back to just, just kind of to put our toe in the water with leaf blowers. And I mean, nobody can pretend that at the moment, that if you're a commercial enterprise, you can't get.
you can't get a more powerful leaf blower, for example, right now. It's true. But sometimes there are conveniences in the modern world that we're learning, at least the way we can do them now, are not worth the impacts. And the impacts, the carbon impacts alone, not to mention the health of somebody walking behind them or living next door to this, if they have asthma, et cetera, just are not worth that extra oomph horsepower, whatever it is in the equipment. Adequate, very adequate equipment is available. And I, I want to see us move forward with this. And I still want to remove the word dust.
Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one other thought, memory of when we discussed this previously. We were given a table that showed sort of approximately what one would pay for an hour of leaf blowing or something like that. So I apologize for not remembering it more. But I remember making the comment that, you know, for that same standard, one-time leaf blowing cost, you know, paying for the service to have someone do it, that was basically the same amount of money that one could pay for a leaf blower. So these, this here, what we're, what we're considering is not going to be levying fees, you know, penalties against the small businesses. It's going to be, it's going to be against the landowners. And my guess is that a landowner that can afford the service of these small businesses could probably afford to buy one and have it on site if needed. So I just wanted to throw that out there that we're, we're not leaning on the small businesses. We're leaning on the landowners.
Dietz.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I, I, thank, thank you.
Sorry about that. I didn't see your light.
Is it?
A very brief, oh, go ahead. A very brief comment. I wish we hadn't spent so much time on this already. I just don't believe in leaf blowers, period. I, I live in the woods. I rake a lot of leaves. I, raking is safe. It's good exercise. If you, if you need to do it, and preferably you do it yourself. I'm, this is just my old school voice. I'm sorry. I feel like I'm staining because I just don't have, I don't have a, I don't have a commitment to this issue.
You, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Dietz.
Oh, thank you. Well, I think you, I think you could be pro rake and anti gas-powered leaf blower. So anyway, so I'm sorry, we, we're not supposed to debate amongst ourselves like this. But anyway, I, I, I think we've had a really good process with this, this issue. One, it's gone on for some time, but we went to the Race Equity Advisory Committee. We went to the Climate Change Advisory Committee. We got their input. We originally thought of having a broader ordinance. We narrowed it down to probably the most, the worst of the, of the bunch is, is the gas-powered leaf blower. And there's two years for compliance, two years, starting, you know, in July. So plenty of time to, to transition to one particular tool. So I, I, and again, and so it's the property owner who is on the hook for this. So I, I think we're being very fair. And trust me, I, I've heard from so many constituents, why don't you get this done? So I'm prepared to make the motion, but I would like to make an amendment to include on the exemptions, the utility operations during emergencies and just as a parliamentary matter. Should I make that motion to include that? And then we have a vote on that? And then we vote on the main motion? Just my.
A point of order. Yeah, this is just to move it to the next meeting. So at the next meeting, we could make the amendment at that time and we're doing passage.
If what he said is true, that's fine.
But through the chair, I would suggest that, again, you're just introducing an ordinance. Now it's time to massage it in any way you'd like. If you would like to make the motion that you would like to include in the section, investor-owned utilities during emergencies, that would be the time to do that now.
Do it now or?
Do it now, and then that would, the change we made, and you can expect the change when it comes back to you for adoption.
Okay.
To the making of motion, I suggest an amendment for you.
Do you want to do?
You, I'll make an amendment, just to point out what the amendment would be.
Okay.
Yeah, say, it would be under section 16.14.050, just add the word utility providers.
During emergencies.
Yeah, before emergency responders. And I put it after fire, because then you don't have to mess with the and and all that stuff. So it'd be between fire and it would read, notwithstanding any contrary provision of this chapter, gasoline-powered and diesel-powered leaf blowers may be used by police, fire, utility providers and public works, emergency responders for the purpose of responding to emergency situations, including but not limited to clearing of downed trees, brush and debris in areas needing expedient clearing for the safety of the public. So those two words between fire and and in this section of the ordinance, that would be my amendment.
Okay, thank, you made a motion. Right, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Murawaki, seconded by Councilmember Dietz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Kay, one nay.
Then we can.
I, I do like to make, maybe I could, I do want to make a motion that we change are less not noisy to maybe less noisy or something similar. And I'm going to add something else to the motion. Hopefully it's not so controversial. I can't have two parts. And that we reduce that controlling dust is one of the purposes.
Was that, was that a second? Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Higginopoulos, seconded by Councilmember Schneider. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Me. Okay.
Yeah, and then I can make the main motion?
Okay.
Okay, that's right. All right. Let's see. I moved advance ordinance 25, 2025, sorry, 202510, prohibiting the use of gas-powered, gas-powered and diesel-powered leaf blowers and prescribing penalties for their use effective July 1st, 2027, to the regular meeting on, of June 10th, 2025, for consideration of adoption.
Second, and my suggestion would be this would be also seen as amended.
Oh, okay, as amended. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Okay, with that, that passes. I was only nay on that and on signs. Okay. Next on the agenda is, I lost it.
Something new.
Something new. Okay, yes. Next item on the agenda is confirm selections for Something New art rotation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is the top. You heard from several speakers during public comments. Deputy City Manager will present to you the art pieces proposed for the next rotation installation of the Something New art.
Good evening, Council. Ellen Schrower, Deputy City Manager. And I'm here today to provide you with just a little bit of information. Thank you to Arts and Humanities Bainbridge and Public Art for coming to the meeting and providing you with the great explanation of how these pieces came to you. This is the eighth installation of five art pieces in the downtown area. They're displayed for one year and the images of those recommended art pieces are in the package for you or in the agenda packet for your review. There are five, which with your recommendation and approval will be installed this summer and then displayed for a period of one year. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions or there's a motion in the packet.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Councilmember Murawaki.
Yeah, is it possible to show the PDF of the art or?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because it's really cool.
Yeah.
So there are five art pieces. The first one is recommended to be installed at Winslow Way and Erickson. It's called Tall Hummer. And this is it in its, in the wild, so to speak, and this would be installed at that location. Can you just move forward? Thank you. The next one at the south terminus of Madison near Doc's Restaurant. And this is a, it's called Tranquility and Chaos. Third here at City Hall is an octopus. Fourth, in Waterfront Park, this is the one which would be further to the east. And fifth, also in Waterfront Park.
Thank you, thank you. Thank, thank you. I think this is the coolest stuff. This is really fun. And I'm the liaison on the Public Arts Committee. I know you've done a lot of work. And Brenda was on that committee and she told me she had a lot of tough choices because she liked so many of them. I want to thank you both for speaking tonight and being advocates for our public arts. And I think this is one of the coolest projects we do in this community. So I have to say, just looking forward to seeing them throughout our island.
Deputy Mayor.
I moved to forward ordinance number 2025-11 relating to, wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, here, I moved to forward the recommended artwork, artwork for the Something New 2025, 2026 rotation and direct the city manager to prepare and execute necessary agreements and installation plan.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Murawaki.
And I'd like to speak to this just very briefly. We've seen Something New several times. And it's a great program. Sometimes we've really excelled. And this is a year, this is a great year. These, the choices you, you presented or the choices that were made in response to a good field of applicants. It's great. Just keep on, keeping on with the same kind of, the same level of, you know, imagination and variety. There's such, such a range of media and conceptions. And I'm happy to see the artists profit from their efforts and the community benefits from all of that. It's great.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Hey, now we are on to introduce or, all of those in favor?
All of them.
Okay, with that, now we are on to introduce ordinance number 2025-11 related to commute trip reduction.
Yes, again, this is the council's introduction of ordinance, not adoption, related to the trip commute reduction program. Our standard transportation coordinator will be making a brief presentation, I believe, on the, well, it's a jump ball between either Laura Reiser or Hannah Borch, Hannah will be preparing a, presenting the council with a, an explanation of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, City Manager. Hi, Council. My name is Hannah Betcher. I'm the Sustainable Transportation Coordinator. And today, for your consideration, we have an ordinance that modifies two chapters of the city code, both pertaining to the commute trip reduction program. So the first chapter is chapter 2.70, and this just establishes the commute trip reduction program incentives for city staff. And the changes being proposed in, in this section of code eliminate the monetary specificity in the code to allow staff to be nimble and respond as ride share options, commute options change and to cater our incentives as that market changes. The second part of the code proposed for amendment is chapter 10.24, and that establishes the commute chip production program requirements for affected employers within the city of Bainbridge Island. It does a couple of things to the code. Mostly it changes the base year against which progress is measured. So every two years, we survey both the city internally, our staff and other affected employers in the city of Bainbridge Island and also the county, survey their employees. And we have this base year to just measure against how much are we really shifting our commute patterns? And that base year is being changed, as well as updating the dates of just the most recently adopted commute trip reduction plan, which is developed and written by Kitsap Transit on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Dietz.
Great. Happy to make the motion. Let's see. I moved to forward ordinance 202511 relating to the commute trip reduction to a future business meeting for a consideration of approval.
Second.
And speak to the motion. I just want to say I'm looking through the edits that were suggested. They're just common sense, just bringing us up, simply things like 60% more of their shifts, take away shifts, put commuting days. I mean, just simple, more clear forward language. That's a, I just think it's just a common sense, kind of a housekeeping thing.
I think, okay, so motion made by Councilmember Dietz. I'm going to give the second to Councilmember Schneider. It was a jinx exactly at the same time. Okay, so all those.
I just wanted to make a, a quick comment. So I love the, the fact that there is an incentive that's being offered. I also just wonder if this is something that could be utilized as sort of a, an incentive to the community to see what, you know, our, our staff is doing. And I guess specifically I'm referencing some of the stars in this. The city manager has already put some of these, highlighted some of these out in the city manager's report. But, you know, just folks that are bicycling rain or shine. Our city clerk is, you know, an amazing example of that. So to the extent that we can make this, promote it to the public for the difference that it makes would really be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor, I would like to thank the council for acknowledging that we do have some very faithful, non-motorized commuters to work. They're, they're very committed. They're committed to living the lifestyle. When they talk about it, they're, they're doing that. So I want to thank the council for acknowledging that.
Somehow I, I pass Director Worsbicky, and he gets really far on the way home. I'm leaving in my car from here and he's still, he rides his bike. So it's, I see you all out there. Thanks, City Manager. Okay, next is consider renewing participation in Kitsap County Urban County Federal Community Development Block Grant, CDPG.
Yes, Mayor, I'm just going to provide an explanation here for my seat. I have no visual aids for this. Basically, the issue before the council is whether it wants to renew its participation with the Kitsap County Urban CDPG Home Program or if it wishes to go to the state of Washington's Small Cities CDPG Home Program. The Community Development Block Grant Home are signature Keystone programs of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. They also are proposed to not be funded under the current administration. These are originally from the original War on Poverty programs. They're intended to be disseminated in block grant form to local governments. Block grant meaning there is discretion within boundaries of how this money could be used and it must benefit a predominantly low-income residents, constituents, or communities. Currently, we are participant in Kitsap County's Urban County Program. Typically, the CDPG funds are distributed to either entitlement cities or communities. Population is over 50,000 or smaller communities can aggregate themselves and achieve benefits with economy scale, which is what we have done for this period of time. The benefits are to both the county, it's, there is greater conscious scale. They can have improved administration spread out. Then to the city, we in theory then can have greater access. The way Kitsap County administers the CDPG and the home programs, typically the city itself does not receive funds because we do not have the concentration of low income needed for this. But many of our nonprofit organizations do submit applications where they can document the benefit to the targeted income group. If you choose to renew with Kitsap County, that would be for basically a four, five-year window of time for that renewal program. We have been a part of the Kitsap County Urban, excuse me, Urban Program. Again, it's a choice for the county council. My assumption is the council would want to continue. However, we do have an option. Another option again would be you would still be participating in a CDPG program. This program is administered. This program is administered by the state. It does have a little bit more flexibility pursuant to CDPG guidelines for economic development activities, which Kitsap County doesn't quite advertise in the same degree as the state's The recommendation is for the council to provide direction, and I can answer further questions about the CDPG program. You'll notice the accompanying explanation in letter to the Department of Human Services. There is one, a minor point in your action. We are asking that the county recognize the city manager's signature. Previously, the previous city manager had signed the documents on behalf of the council, and that was accepted, but talking to the council. A county, they want some explicit action.
Thanks, City Manager. Deputy Mayor?
First, a question. Is there some risk involved if we do withdraw from, from the administration at the county level? Is there some risk or some loss? You said that there is a process at the state level. So would that, wouldn't that be a more, wouldn't that be less secure or less certain for the people we represent or the interests we represent on the island? Through the chair, I think the response that is, depends on how you define risk. In theory, the state's program is competitive program. You'd have to bear a competitive application. But in theory, you could have a larger amount of money that you receive for whatever the particular program was. On the other hand, since it's competitive, you could submit competitive, or what you thought were competitive applications and not receive any programs through that. It's a smaller pool with the Kitsap County, well, in terms of home funds, for example, 1.6 million annually. We'll see what happens with CDPG money. It's a smaller pool, but there's less competition for the smaller pool. Yes, yes. Well, I've, I've been a participant once, and I've been assuming I'll be participating again on behalf of the city. And it, that's, I'll move that option. I move to direct the city manager to allow the automatic renewal of the ILA to continue participation in the Kitsap County CDPG and HOME Block Grant Consortium, and execute required updates and new provisions.
Motion made by Deputy Mayor Quetzaln, seconded by Councilmember Dietz. And I see more discussion. Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. Yeah, I'm not sure I'm going to support it because I have a couple of questions. I'm reading the executive summary, and you mentioned it in presentation. The city of Bainbridge Island does not qualify on its own for direct allocation of community development block grant funds, although we're part of that. So in, in this entire partnership and during this time, have there been any allocations to city Bainbridge Island through this partnership and in a specific program?
Through the chair, I do not know. I believe not. However, we do know that organizations located in Bainbridge Island that provide services to the target population have received funding.
And that's a fault of the second question, because I heard your presentation also that because we do not have the high-density population of low-income, other disadvantaged demographics, that the federal community development program, programs, we just wouldn't fit because we don't have that kind of, because it's, it's targeted money. This is what it's really for. And I, you know, that's something I certainly get, totally get behind. But if we don't have the kind of demographic qualification for that, why do we continue? I would, I'm just, I, I think the possible one would be seeking on our own. We have a professional lobbyist, we have, we have means, and also we have, you know, our local groups like Bainbridge Housing and all the rest that might be able to be a qualified applicant, very targeted, not going through the federal requirements of the community development block grants, programs to target large community, large communities to improve those. So I, I don't support the motion as it is.
Through, through the chair, you, in order to be an entitlement, a direct recipient, you have to have a population of greater than 50,000. Fifty.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Yes. In the, in last year's process, Helpline House made a very well-prepared application. It was almost entirely funded. It was really, you know, top of the line in terms of the, the support from the committee making the decisions. And we do have, in the eyes of the county administration, a very good reputation, Housing Resources Bainbridge. And I feel we have that reputation to uphold or that, or those interests to, to represent in that process. I, there's uncertainty as to what funds are going to be available this time around. But I wouldn't want to be involved in anticipatory compliance with the, you know, the stuff that's going on from, from Washington DC. I don't, I wish I knew more about the state-level opportunities. I think they may be of a larger sort, but a riskier or a more competitive environment. I just, I'd like to protect our place within Kitsap County.
Thanks Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Dietz and then Councilmember Hytopolis?
Did you, she already went, yeah, but did you, did you speak on this already? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Hytopolis? Yeah, so I just, am I missing a pitch from the city manager as to how we could fare under the process? I mean, I feel like that's maybe what Councilwoman Quetzal is talking about. If we don't, are we, I don't know that we're getting a sense of how, what the alternative would look like. And I don't understand how that affects us versus, as an entity versus the organizations in community like HRB and Helpline House. So I would, I would tend towards like protect, preserving what we've got going on so far to protect their interest, for one thing, as Councilwoman Quetzal has pointed out. But what, is there a whole other world of opportunity that we're missing out on, and we should set forth on our own?
No, not necessarily. Again, we could not be independent. If we do not join in Kitsap County, the nonprofits such as Helpline House would not be eligible in Kitsap County.
Right.
They, again, it, it's a little bit of a toggle switch. Either we would be a part of the Kitsap County program, or do we default to Washington State's program? But one way or the other, we could get some service if there were a, say, larger-scale economic, and I don't think there is one on the horizon, but a larger-scale economic development project, you may want to consider something like the, the Washington State. But we don't necessarily have that. We do have a track record with Kitsap County. It's a smaller program. They are competitive grants. You have to compete. But if we did not participate in the Kitsap County program, then Helpline House would not be an eligible applicant because our jurisdiction would not be a part of the pool. And what happens is Kitsap County, our population brings a particular amount of funding to Kitsap County, which is distributed.
Sure.
So that's, they, they, quite frankly, rely upon our population to increase the, the pool of money they have.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember-
I guess it's my-
Yeah, Councilmember Dietz.
My turn. Yeah, I, you know, this, this is a bit tough because I don't quite know if we went the other direction, what, what would we get? I'm, I'm, I did second the motion because I'm feeling that's more what we're familiar with, that we're, we are getting benefits. Helpline House and Housing Resources Bainbridge, I take it, are, are giving benefits through this. Haven't seen any advocacy from any, any of the organizations, so I, I'm not sure how much they were aware of our discussion going on tonight. I would think if they were getting money and they, since there was a chance of losing that, they would have reached out to us, I'm pretty sure. So in the absence of more information, I'm going to support the motion that's on the table. But I am, I feel a little uncomfortable here because, you know, I mean, are we giving up an opportunity? It appears not, that perhaps we're better off staying with what we have. So that's where I'm at now, and look forward to what my colleagues have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Dietz. Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I think I'm starting to piece this together. With option one, where we continue doing what we're doing, we are both benefiting Kitsap County because our population is, you know, helps to accrue more benefit. And then our nonprofits also get a chance to pull from those funds. So I'm assuming, assuming by that, that the, the flip side means that if we were to default to the state version, then Helpline House, as an example, not exclusively, would not really have the same opportunity to get funds? Or is there a comparable at the state level that our nonprofits would be able to, you know, benefit from?
Through, through the chair, my impression is the state's program looks to the governmental entity more. Kitsap County looks at the broader range of nonprofits. And again, I'll just repeat, is how the program works is that Kitsap County is, along with our participation, or Orchard's participation, the county's participation gets an amount of money. Then Kitsap County takes some off the top for administration. The more agencies that participate, the more effective the administration money is and their ability to administer the program. If I would question anything about the county's program, you will note that several meetings ago, the Kitsap County representative for here to provide you an update. That was the first update, was delivered in person in my tenure here. If the council wants, can continue with Kitsap County, and I see no reason why you shouldn't, it would be reasonable for you to ask them for an annual report from the department to the council. In other words, show up when, other than when you're just asking for something. And I don't mean that in a real crude way, but just show up a little bit more regularly. We're at the end of the line, and we'd like to hear from the county a little bit more.
Okay. Just to kind of wrap that up then, so what I'm, I'm assuming that, maybe we could assume that our nonprofits would prefer alternative one. And we don't really know what alternative two offers, you know, maybe some new stuff that we could do with economic development, but it feels pretty fuzzy and, and unclear. So I guess we are throwing our hats back into the Kitsap County pot. That being said, we don't know if we're going to, if the current government is going to, the federal government is going to be putting money in that pot anyway. Am I parsing this?
No, that's, I, I think it's correct. And again, I'll tell you that from my working assumption, yes, that nonprofit communities that benefited from CDPG funds going through the Kitsap County program would probably prefer that they stay. On the other hand, if I did mention to you that you do have another alternative, I wouldn't be fully serving you to let you know that you do have an alternative as well. Although it is fuzzy, there is another avenue for you there, but right now, you're being serviced through Kitsap County. You are receiving that. You also know that the amount of funding could be significantly cut. I will say, in my experience, as being a city manager, the CDPG program, the Home Program is a nationwide program, and right on cycle, there's always discussion about eliminating funding. So far, that has not happened. This seems pretty consistent with the past practice that comes up from time to time.
Okay. So I, I support the motion on the floor. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider. Thanks, City Manager. I also support the motion with so much uncertainty, certainty right now, and so many things up in the air and things we don't know. I'm most comfortable sticking with what we know and our partner in this is Kitsap County. And I think that's who we should stay with. Councilmember Murawaki?
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. And the, thank you for the information being shared by all of us. And thank you, City Manager, for the information that you have to be a city of 50,000 to participate for these grants, so we wouldn't be able to do that. So that's kind of moot. Right? But I do want to make the point that we are hindered by the fact, I'm actually, I think it's good that we don't have really deep areas of poverty or low income that we, because our income is so high, but we, these, these valuable federal community development block grants are really targeted, you know, from the civil rights area to, you know, advanced communities and do all that. And that's, I understand that. So that's the part that's kind of troublesome because we'll probably never see any of that. Of course, the next three years, probably never see any money anyway in these, these programs.
Oh, let's see. We had, oh, sorry.
But I, I think we just have to do it, just continue the letter, and hope for the best. But with the knowing that it's unlikely that we'll receive this because it's not targeted to appropriate communities.
Okay.
If it helps our nonprofits, I don't know how that works, but we'll see.
All right. So we have a motion on the table. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. And now we move on to receive monthly update on comprehensive plan and Winslow Subarea Plan updates.
Yes, Mayor Pat Charis, the new aide here, and would like to go ahead and tell you what the latest status is on the Winslow Subarea Plan and the conference plan update.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, City Council. Patty Charnas, Planning and Community Development. I'm going to break this. It's a pleasure to be here and to give you an update on, right now, the planning commission's work on the Winslow Subarea Plan, which has, of course, relationship to the comprehensive I've been talking to you about the planning commission's in-depth work on establishing, first off, a working outer boundary for the Winslow Subarea. And then subsequent to that, there are meetings establishing outer working boundaries of the zoning districts within the Winslow Subarea. But I'm pleased to share with you tonight some recent work on development standards for two select zoning districts that have interesting implications that I'm also pleased to share with you. So let's take a look at that work. The planning commission recommended unanimously that the Ferry District have an upper development standard of a floor area ratio of 4.00, provided it comes with affordable housing. Floor area ratio, or FAR, is an expression of density. And along with that, a maximum building height of up to 65 feet, roughly six stories, provided it too is an upper limit that comes with affordable housing. And importantly, is accompanied with required step backs. That means after the second or third floor, the building steps back. And this avoids a canyon effect on road frontages. The Ferry District presented an interesting opportunity because it is a major transportation hub that provides walkability to services and amenities, and also has redevelopment potential. They also came up with a recommended maximum upper limit for development standards for the high school road. And here, the redevelopment potential was a key factor for the planning commission. The recommended development standards, again, at the maximum level, is a floor area ratio of up to 4.0 like Ferry, only again, if affordable housing is associated with it, and a maximum building height, this time of 55 feet or roughly five stories. Again, with affordable housing being associated with that upper limit, and a step back after the second and third floor. The interesting opportunity this presents was an idea by the vice chair of the planning commission and that staff is currently undertaking and carrying out now, which is an interim land capacity analysis. It will be able to measure with these development standards where we are relative to our, to our state mandated housing targets, and give the planning commission an important progress report on where things are, maybe even possibly being, having been met with these, these maximum levels. So documenting how the city is going to meet its mandates, mandates under 12- So documenting how the city is going to meet its mandates under 1220. As you recall, we've said that the state law requires cities and counties to show sufficient land capacity. These development standards are an expression of land capacity. So that's why we're doing this interim land capacity analysis. It's underway, it should take about a week, and we'll bring it the results back to the planning commission. So this is fairly exciting. But of course, we'll also be continuing to document how we're going to meet our housing mandates by showing what we're going to do with city-owned property, how we're utilizing and making available the multifamily tax exemption and other housing affordability tools. And as I've mentioned to you in the past, we are utilizing this periodic update and its new mandates to do a rather review and, if necessary, revise of our comprehensive plan goals and policies. Meaning, this isn't a do-over. This is hard, this is a very selected, focused look at our existing goals and policies related primarily to our land use, housing elements, transportation, capital facilities and utilities elements, plus maybe a couple of others. Again, selected, targeted, staff likes to call it surgical updates to goals and policies in those elements. So the planning commission has been working on the Winslow subarea. And we have, you know, good progress to report. These are the meetings that they've held, both through regularly scheduled meetings as well as scheduled special meetings. And if people are unable to participate in person or watch online, they can find the meeting minutes online and find out the motions that have been passed by the planning commission. So thank you for this opportunity to serve as the anchor to this evening's meeting and to looking forward to giving you another monthly update next month.
Thank you, Director Charnas. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think this is, this is exciting progress. I'm glad we're going to get some numbers associated with them soon for the capacity analysis. A quick clarification question would be, I've got a bunch of them, but so the redevelopment possibilities. So we're sort of dialing up the FAR and the, and with the hopes that maybe there will be some redevelopment and that that redevelopment will be with affordable housing. But obviously, that area right there is pretty built out already. So in this capacity analysis that's being done, are we going to get back? How do we interpret the number that we get back for that area that's already pretty built out? I know that, is there going to be some sort of a multiplier? You know, there is a 25% chance at this, at these ratios, you know? How do we know what the chances are of it actually getting done? And because once these numbers come out, if they're just based on, you know, overall land that already has been built. I'm losing my words here, but I think you might know what I'm referring to. So I'll just stop for right now.
Seeing no more lights? Deputy Mayor.
I always want more information. And I do know, from being in the chambers, following the planning commission's work, I knew how, I know how meticulous their work has been, how careful it's been, careful of impacts that, where we don't want to disturb established neighborhoods. There's been a great deal of forecasting where we want to go. And that is what, what is involved in, in the capacity analysis. And yet redevelopment in the Ferry Terminal area and also redevelopment in the High School Road area is a long ways off. We, and, and there are property owners and existing development meeting certain needs. You can't tell how many years it will take to get into a place where we can start real master planning with the interested parties and, and the the potential for more housing. I think, if, if I may, I'd like to know from the planning director what, what, what the work looks like at the shorter term. How, where are we and where are we going with the composition of the Winslow subarea plan? I feel that the careful work that the planning commission has been doing with Winslow, and it is the hardest work that you can imagine, it's, it's standing in the way of the work which the planning director referred to on the elements of the comprehensive plan. I want to see, I want to know at what point the planning commission will be working with the composers of the subarea plan. Parts of the subarea plan are on the record in a draft form. And it'd be useful if all of us on the council were up to date with what has been done. But then there are the chapters yet to be written. And I'm trying to imagine how that work is going to be done. I wonder if we can get some information on that at this point.
Yeah, I just want to, this might just be a comment, not a question, but I just wanted to say that I, you know, and we've received the information and that's, that's great. I do look at that, at that, those FARs and those heights as being tentative and subject to, A, the capacity analysis is the right word, whatever, whatever the appropriate terminology is, capacity projection that comes off of those, as well as also subject to whatever development standards are recommended ultimately to actually make that be what we want it to be. So I just want to say that for the, for the sake, for the public's sake, that I just assume we're in process. And that's what we have so far that the planning commission's working with. I definitely want to put a plug in for us taking the time we need to do it well, including, again, as has been asked by the planning commission, I think, a couple of times, deferring the parts that can be deferred to more thoughtful work over, say, the coming year after the plan is adopted, rather than squeezing any more into the process than we need to.
Thank you, Councilmember Hightoplis. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to attempt to be a little bit more clear. I think what I'm asking for with regards to the capacity analysis in an area that, oh, it has a lot of development in it already, is what are the assumptions that are going into this analysis? Are we, for instance, saying that, you know, the, the consultants are, are saying that we're assuming that 25% is going to get redeveloped over the course of 10 years or 20 years or whatever it is? And, you know, and how soon that might likely play out? I mean, I think there are probably statistics out there that, you know, we can't count on, but we also just need to know what the likelihoods are of something big getting torn down so that something bigger could get put up. Anyway, thank you.
So through the chair, there we have about three different questions or two questions and a comment. First of all, I'd like the city attorney to respond to the question regarding capacity analysis on a redevelopment site, there are standards.
I believe that the Department of Commerce has some guidance in its, in its housing planning documents that talks about how you look at the potential for redevelopment. And I was looking, I haven't been able to find it in, in the brief moment that we've had here, but I believe there is guidance from the, from the Department of Commerce on that as to how you do that kind of analysis.
The second was a question for the planning director in terms of involvement or returning the integration of the subarea plan with the comp plan.
Well, the subarea plan is, is a part of a comprehensive plan. But because our existing long-term growth strategy, which was so well-written and still stands today to guide the planning commission and the public on where we're going to concentrate people, housing, and the services needed to support people in housing, jobs, is Winslow subarea. So clearly, it's important that we get the Winslow subarea correct because it can, at least it's predicted to be able to accommodate most of the growth in terms of both our state mandates as well as the population targets. If that doesn't become the case, then staff and the planning commission are prepared to look outside of the Winslow subarea to the next place that the existing comprehensive plan recommends, which is our neighborhood centers. But because there's been so many new state requirements regarding housing that we have some other tools to contemplate as we wrap up the comprehensive plan and Winslow subarea plan. So again, Winslow subarea plan is a portion of the comprehensive plan. And it is important for this jurisdiction because we believe it's the place where we're going to direct most growth, which is consistent with our long-term growth strategy. And city attorney is correct. Land capacity analyses are extremely detailed analyses that have both a spatial as well as a temporal aspect to them. And so when it comes out, they'll be describing their methodology as how do they reconsider redevelopment.
And I, I think the others to acknowledge the comment that it is true and a concern that of staff is that the city council has yet to weigh in on the standards, the height, density standards or other mass bulk standards or the boundaries. And that waiting for a recommendation that seems to have embargoed now at the planning commission, but it's acknowledged that the city council's actually has the responsibility for making the decision at the end of the day. And that is concerned in terms of the schedule of the overall process.
Thanks, City Manager. Thank you, Director, so much for your presentation. I wish everyone could listen to the planning commission meetings or watch them and see the level of work that is getting done. And they're, they're getting to it. I find a lot of the fascinating work is in their disagreements, which are very, have just started happening where they're not exactly on the same page. And so it's been really, really great to hear that because I think as they talk through that, is where I'm hearing some of the, where we might land. Time is of the essence. I think right now we are a member of a club of 20-something, and it's not a club we really want to be in. Those are the cities, the jurisdictions who have yet to turn in their plans. And I'm not a betting person, but I probably bet we're going to end up on a list of five at some point or 10. So for that not to happen, it's going to take, I think, maybe us starting council, but when I say us, maybe starting to have policy discussions on these as they make the decision. So maybe we can start having a policy discussion on the heights that we saw today and the FAR that we saw today so that we're moving in concert. And Deputy Mayor.
I just want to make a few comments for my colleagues. There are just a few steps you could take to get close to understanding what the planning commission is up against or what they're, what they're dealing with. Take a look on the Engage Bainbridge, on the page devoted to the subarea plan. The existing chapters in draft form are there. The, the, the one that is labeled synthesis and vision, it's 12 pages of words and graphic representations describing the regulatory and planning imperatives and also the constraints and opportunities presented by Winslow as it is today. Constraints and opportunities. And I think it's a total of five pages packed with information and stimulus to, to, I wouldn't say problem solving, but sort of problem recognition. And that's one, one thing you can do. And I think I want colleagues and I want the public to bring into focus the, the key parts of our comprehensive plan because that's the frame of reference within which the subarea planning is happening. It's not too many pages. Look at the introduction to the comprehensive plan, which includes the, the guiding principles and policies associated with the guiding principles. But there's more information there as well. It's just a few pages. Many parts of the comprehensive plan will be amended and it'll be a fairly simple, it'll be not easy, but, but simple compared to what we've been wandering around with in Winslow. When we get to that, but we ought to know, the council ought to know from their own perspectives individually, what things need to be amended and how those amendments might be carried forward to improve, to bring up to date what we will be guided for, for the next 20 years or 10 years at least to the next update. So look at the, look at the land use element and then the housing element. We're not just guided by the mandates until, in, in House Bill 1220. We're guided by our own existing comprehensive plan. We're also guided by our housing needs assessment and our housing action plan that was assumed to be in force when the environmental impact statement was drafted. And let's go forward with it. Let's work with it and understand what the difficulties are and maybe some of the problems that we've created up to this point that we need to untangle from. I don't know. I, I hope that in the next study session in June, not at the beginning of June, but on June 17th, I hope that we can, as a council, talk about those portions of our comprehensive plan and see going forward what, what we think of it all. Because we haven't been doing that. And I feel we're not, we're not ready to really understand the work that is overdue and very slow in, in the formation. Maybe we can play our own part in bringing things together.
All right, thanks, Deputy Mayor. And I think we're going to leave it at that. With that, we are adjourned.